Amendment of section forty-two sixty-nine of the wireless communication facilities to bring it into conformance with state law. This is continued from our May second meeting.
I think, Mr. Chairman, that both these two items, three point one, three point two, in one motion, we would recommend continuing those to your July eighteenth meeting. And we've been conferring with Mr. Martin here, and we told you that with our completion of work on temporary signs, we thought we could move on to that subject, but we're not done with temporary signs. So, we're gonna do temporary signs first and then get to that. So, you do not have a meeting July fourth, so we think July eighteenth is a reasonable date to bring that back to you.
That's three point one and three point two?
Yes, both those items are, they're tied together, so.
And I'm sorry, you said July eighteenth?
July eighteenth.
Is there a second? It's been moved and seconded that items number three point one and number three point two be continued at our July eighteenth meeting.
I have just one question.
Yes, sir.
I think this is obvious, and we may have talked about it, but it says in our, in the staff report summary that there is still the regulation about height, tower height compared to surrounding territory, obviously to avoid collision with buildings, et cetera. And I, this is a technical question, but on, I think it's, in the text of this, it's under Class C permits, and it is-
Existing ordinance?
Existing ordinance, it's been crossed out, number three, three, I think it is, under setbacks, all of that, towers setback from property line, a distance equal to the tower height, that all, that language has been taken out. Where is that re, is that, where is that in the text, if it is-
What they have, the state legislature has attempted to preempt the field on that subject, and what they said was that you cannot apply setbacks to towers that don't apply to other structures. So, essentially, what we would do in a case like that is we would look at what the structure setback is for a particular zoning district, and then we would be limited to applying that to towers. So, it's going to be much lesser setback than the height of the tower, or half the height of the tower, or any of those things. It's basically said you can regulate setback, but you can only apply the setbacks that apply to other structures.
And so, this is in state statute, do I get that right?
It's in the state legislation, yes.
Okay.
And so, there are, let's say there are many in the wireless communication field that believe that those types of setbacks rule out too many locations. And, of course, if you look around the community, most of our towers are in very remote locations that are far from any building, and that's because of our setback requirement. But the state did basically say that cities are limited to requiring a setback that is equal to the setback for other similar structures. So, if you, if we have a side yard setback of twenty feet for a bank structure next to residential, then we can only have a setback requirement of twenty feet for a tower.
Okay.
Wasn't the setback design that, should the tower fall, that wouldn't fall on any-
Correct, it's what's referred to as a fall zone, but the legislature preempted our, they didn't, that, there, those in the wireless communication business did not like local fall zone regulations, so.
So, if you're taking a class-
Some of them dispute, and there is some evidence that towers don't usually fall over, they usually snap or come off in sections, so it's pretty rare for, the other aspect of that that is often overlooked is that cell towers experience icing in the winter. And we had our very first cell tower in Salina, the business made the mistake of having vehicles parked underneath the tower, and there were about twenty vehicles that sustained serious ice damage from ice that built up on the tower and then melted and fell off, so that, that's the other aspect of that. But we drafted our regulations originally to have a fall zone, and the state legislature has basically said we have to treat towers the same as any other structure for setback purposes.
Would that apply to wind turbines, Jim?
We have, it does not apply to wind turbines, we can have our own local requirements for wind turbines, it hasn't been preempted.
So, I just redid my house insurance, and I'm aware of that. So, I'm, if I look for a new house, it's gonna be out of the way of any towers, and I'll still feel safer than I would in a classroom at the University of Kansas with gun regulations, so.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes.
I call the question, please.
Yes, please, thank you, Mr. Buck.
Okay, we have, what do we have? A motion and a second, have we voted?
We have a motion to postpone those to July eighteenth.
Okay, can we have a vote, please? Everyone in favor, aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Item three point three is an application Z sixteen dash six A, which is filed by the Salina City Planning Commission requesting an amendment of Article ten signs by adding various amendments.
And we just wanted to go back and refresh your memory, and I'm kind of referring to page two and three of your staff report, but what we did in drafting our work group, working with Mr. Martin and city staff members, we started with the premise that we wanted as much as possible to preserve the restrictions on the placement of commercial signs in residential districts. And so, we started with that basic premise, and then from that premise, we worked on possible justifications for exceptions to that prohibition on placement of commercial signs. And the two that we felt at the time were most justified were an exemption for onsite real estate signs, for properties that were for sale or lease, and onsite open house signs for property for sale or lease, or, in addition to that, garage sale signs. What we felt was less justified as an exception were offsite, open house, garage sale signs, and what we referred to as contractor or construction signs. So, with the challenge of trying to come up with justifications or findings to support those exceptions, you decided that, to leave those two out, those were deleted from the version of the ordinance that went to the city commission. And the city commission reviewed that, they got additional public comment, and they actually approved your version on first reading. On second reading, they got additional public comment, and they decided to ask the city's legal counsel to conduct additional research to confirm whether the city may lawfully accept certain categories of signs. And so, after reviewing that and having additional discussion, they voted to return this item to you for reconsideration of additional exceptions, and specifically, their focus was on developing possible language for allowing offsite advertising signs, which would be primarily focused on offsite, open house, and garage sale signs, and also looking at what we refer to as contractor signs on individual residential lots. And so, I'll just preface this by saying that the approach that we looked at when we were working at, as a staff and working with you, was looking at content-based exceptions. And the difference between where we are then and where we are now is we're trying to move away from having exceptions based on content and focusing on time, place, and manner exceptions. So, I would like to pause here and have Mr. Martin go over his memo, which is attached and which was furnished to the city commission, and kind of explain the approach you took in explaining option two to the city commission.
The memo enclosed with your packet, as Mr. Under mentioned, was requested by the city commission prior to their second reading of the ordinance. And the, the issue that prompted the question was, just as a refresher, the, the text amendment that this body approved had a general prohibition on commercial signs in residential neighborhoods. And the issue boiled down to, is there a way, or are there options to potentially create more exceptions for the construction sign when work is occurring on the property, or is there a way to create an exception for offsite, real estate, open house, and garage sale signs? So, we researched that, and that's what that memo is devoted to in your packets. I won't read it to you, but I would like to kind of walk through what we identified as the options, and it boils down to really one option is legally recommended. But assuming you start with the general prohibition, the issue is how do you create exceptions in a legally permissible way? And the first option that we identified, that we called option one in the memo, is basically you create specific content-based exceptions. So, we simply say, if you live in a residential neighborhood, you can have an offsite, open house, or an offsite garage sale sign. On its face, that seems easy enough, and it certainly would be the easiest from a practical implementation perspective, but we confirm that that would not legally be permissible in all likelihood. The content-based exceptions for different categories of commercial signs is not favored by Supreme Court precedent, and we must satisfy the intermediate scrutiny tests if we are going to go about creating content-based exceptions for different types of signs. We were unable to find any legal authority to support that, so we didn't ultimately recommend option number one. And that, that's consistent generally with what we talked about when this matter was before you a couple of months ago, and, but moving on to option number two, this is a content-neutral approach towards allowing those categories of signs, and it utilizes time, place, and manner rules. And I know we talked a little bit about that last time we were here, but kind of speaking to what that means, an example of a time regulation would be a law that allows signs to be displayed during certain hours of display, or during certain days, or times of the year. Those are content neutral, because you're saying you get a sign, doesn't matter what it says on it, it's just allowed during these times. So, that's a legally permissible way to allow signs. An example of a place regulation would be a regulation that says where you can have a sign and where you can't, regardless of what it says. So, you can have it in the right-of-way, or you can have it outside of the right-of-way, maybe imposing setback requirements. And then, an example of a manner regulation would be just any regulation that limits the size, or the height, or the quantity of signs, regardless of what they say. So, that memo that, that was enclosed with the packet provided some examples of how you could go about allowing real estate, open house, garage sale signs, and the offsite varieties of those, as well as construction signs, in a content-neutral method. And so, generally, what, what we recommended doing, if you were to go about doing that, would be to categorize real estate, open house, and garage sale signs as business signs, because they are advertising a, a business activity that is occurring on the premises. And then, to categorize the offsite varieties of those signs as advertising signs or offsite signs, because they're, they're advertising something that's happening on a property other than the property on which the sign is placed. And then, we recommended that we would categorize a construction sign as an onsite business sign, because it is advertising a construction activity or a construction business that is performing work on the site on which the sign is located. And then, if you were to take that approach, you could create various content-neutral rules, you know, imposing different times. For example, you could say that a business sign is allowed on a property during the period that construction is occurring. And we know that because a construction sign is now a business sign, a property owner would be allowed to put up a, essentially a construction sign during that period, that there, there's construction activity going on in their property. The downside, or the unintended consequences of the, the time, place, and manner regulations is that, to the extent we say you can have a business sign, or you can have an advertising sign during certain time periods, or during the occurrence of certain events, the property owner doesn't have to use that sign for the intended purpose, so they don't have to put a for-sale message on it, and they could put any other lawful business activity message on it. If we were to allow offsite advertising signs, then a property owner could technically put up a, a sign advertising an out-of-state corporation if they so choose, even though the intent in this regulation is to allow offsite, open house, and offsite garage sale signs. So, there are unintended consequences with option two, but it is really the only permissible way that we identified to allow the offsite varieties of those signs in a content-neutral fashion. And so, that is what the city commission directed us to study, and ultimately, what it remanded it to this body to consider in an alternative text amendment. We have discussed some options with staff and have come up with some sample language, if you were inclined to discuss a text amendment that takes that approach, which we could discuss with you. So, I'd be happy to answer any questions about that memo, or about either of the options, and where we, where we ended up with our legal recommendation.
Thank you, Mr. Martin. Do we have questions?
I don't know if they're specific to you, Aaron, or not, maybe to Dean's staff, so, I think I'll maybe wait until we move, unless this is gonna free-flow back and forth.
What we'd like to do for the framework of discussion, we would refer you to page five of your staff report, and the options that we have there. And so, under option one, that option would, we would want some indication from the commission that you are receptive to those two additional exceptions to accommodate offsite advertising signs and contractor signs, but in a content-neutral fashion. Option two would be to say you're receptive to one of those additional exceptions, but not both of them. And then, the third one, if there was a consensus among the commissioners that you were satisfied with your original recommendation, and you would simply want to resubmit that, and say that you only want to allow the onsite, real estate, and open house signs, and not deal with the other two, that would be an option. So, it would be good, Mr. Chairman, if we could get a consensus of commissioners, whether they are receptive to considering additional exceptions that would allow for those two categories, the offsite advertising and the onsite business, and discuss the time, place, and manner restrictions that could apply to that. So, if you are, as a body, your consensus is that you're satisfied with your original recommendation, you are within your purview to resubmit that, but if you're receptive to exploring these options a little farther, then we would, we've got some possible language for you to discuss and consider, but we wouldn't want to do that if the consensus of the commission is that you just want to resubmit your original approach.
Thank you. I want to come back to that exact question, Dean, but before we get to it, one question I had, Aaron, for you, in the sample language for a temporary outdoor advertising sign that, the examples that we have here in the packet-
That is planning staff's sample, but it's, it's somewhat reflective of what we're discussing, but if, if you want, do you want John to put that up on the board so that we can look at it?
Yeah.
So, again, this is just a sample taken from another jurisdiction's-
Right.
-ordinance.
So, my question about that is in regard to Mr. Martin's discussion about content-based. When we were talking about, and I think you maybe even referred to businesses and the concern about exceptions for outside corporations and so forth, being therefore free to do that. My question is, within that language, if it said something like any, an outdoor advertising yard sign for area business, does that then make it a content-based exception?
Yes, I, I think that would be something that would potentially raise constitutional issues-
Yeah.
-because it is creating categories of potential advertisers that are allowed, or are not allowed, based on the state of residency or domicile. So, yes, I would, I think if we are going to allow advertising messages, we should do so without regard to who is the speaker, and without regard to the various subcategories of advertising, unless we can satisfy the constitutional test for doing so.
And the reason that we're, and it's very hard to wrap your minds around, but, but the idea that you have to think about is that the, the visual impact, distraction on drivers, whatever the measured impacts that you're trying to do are the same-
Regardless of-
-regardless of the content. So, what, what you have to think about is, what we are allowed to do is place time, place, and manner restrictions on that. So, again, this is just sample language, but it's not far off from what Aaron had developed to discuss, if, if you want to go there. But the idea here is that these signs are only allowed between six a.m. on a Friday, and they have to be removed by six p.m. on the following Sunday. So, if you draft your time, place, and manner restrictions in such a way, you're drafting them in a way to accommodate certain types of signs, which would make the time, place, and manner restrictions makes that less attractive to paying somebody to advertise a business in their yard if they're so limited on, on the time, place, and, and duration that it can be there. So, if you look at this, this time period is the time when you most commonly would see realtors wanting to utilize open house signs, and property owners wanting to utilize garage sale signs, but it avoids the content-based regulation by using the content-neutral advertising yard sign. So, we'll, we'll go back, but again, the, the idea is that we are prepared to go further and dive deeper, if you are interested in doing so, but if, if a majority of you don't want to go there, and just want to resubmit what you submitted before, then we, we won't go any further, but we're prepared to discuss these exceptions.
So, let's, let's resolve that, first of all. First of all, let's recap what happened, because there were two of us that didn't support it to begin with, and I then spoke at the commission meeting, I attended those meetings, I heard the public, and it didn't surprise me that after that, it was sent back to us again. So, I haven't changed my viewpoint whatsoever in terms of not being in favor of the original recommendation, but I don't know, you know, what anyone else is thinking, since this has all taken place, or what you've heard from people. So, we need to probably arrive at whether or not you want to proceed, or you want to stay as we were to begin with.
Could I ask a couple of questions, and then, to kind of get me where I want to be? I know you said you were at the meeting, I happened to watch it on, on TV. My understanding was, is that there were four commissioners at that meeting, am I correct? Does anybody remember?
I don't, I don't recall exactly, because there were, there were multiple-
I'm quite cer, I'm quite certain there were four there.
At the first or the second time?
Well, at the second reading.
It could have been that Mayor Crawford was gone on the twenty-fourth.
Okay. And, and I think if I remember right, that the vote, and the first motion died for a second, and that was to go ahead and support the planning commission's submission, submittal. And then, another motion was made to go ahead and send it back, and that passed three to four. Oh, excuse me, three to one, excuse me, with one person not going for it. And, and that, to me, all those things make, make some importance to me, because the elected body had an opportunity to do what they needed to do, or wanted to do with this, except they didn't have a majority. In order to override our, going to them, they had to have a majority, three, fours, and they would not have had that, not with four there and one billion against. And their assumption would have been if the person who made the motion to, you know, accept it as is, wasn't going to switch. So, it came back to us kind of by default, because the city commission, the elected body, wasn't able or willing to do what they wanted with it. And, and I, that's going to be real big in my mind about whether or not we should change. We had a public hearing, I believe, we had more than twice, I think, on this. We had two people once, I think, I'm pretty certain we had two people.
Most, most of the focus that we got public input on dealt with the banners and feather flags, and that, that aspect of this-
But that really wasn't, we'd already kind of been through that.
Right.
This last one was primarily, you know, we had two individuals who spoke to us, that they, they, and I suppose they were representing some unknown quantity of people. So, you know, I'm, I'm having a hard time trying to decide that we want to do this, because I don't think we're getting very much. We have a problem with enforcement right now, no disrespect intended, but we're going to pass something that we're going to enforce, whether a sign is taken down by six o'clock on Sunday evening, on a night when no city employee typically works on this or law enforcement. We're not gonna, you know, that's, you know, we're basically saying just put signs up wherever you want, whenever you want.
With the adoption of the exceptions-
That's, that's my take on it, that mean, that's my little, my little piece of that, so.
So, I presume that you are not wanting to move forward on any change?
Somebody have to tell me what we're, no, I think not, unless somebody in this discussion can give me an idea of what we're going to gain by doing this, other than making some groups of people feel like that they are, have been heard, and are given quarter.
From our perspective, the staff perspective, is that when we were discussing this with you the first time, we sensed from the community, and even internally among staff, is that we were searching for ways to accommodate offsite, open house, and garage sale signs, and we presently allow the construction and contractor signs already. But our focus at that time is that we were struggling to come up with legal justifications for what Aaron would refer to as content-based exceptions. So, the difference this time is that we are moving towards a content-neutral approach, which is more acceptable, and accommodates those kinds of signs, but it has the potential side effect of also allowing other types of advertising signs, or onsite business signs, and that, and, and the extreme approach is to just allow X number of signs, and without regard to what they say. But this, this exception that's being discussed here is, is not allowing more signs. It doesn't change the numerical limit on signs, it just provides a wider range, and it allows the property owner who lives on the corner that wants to accommodate his neighbor by putting out their sign to allow for that. And you have to judge for yourselves. Our experience with open house, real estate signs, is that the real estate professionals are fairly responsible about putting the signs out and picking them up when the open house is over, but if you're concerned that that won't be the case, then you should probably have some pause about the exception.
Well, and see, I think if we're, if we're writing an ordinance for the people that we know are responsible and have the best interests of the city at the whole at hand, we wouldn't have a sign ordinance, period. But we write an ordinance to protect ourselves- But we write an ordinance to protect ourselves from individuals or groups who may not have the best interest of the city of Salina and individuals at mind. And we've lost a lot of that by having to give up the content, I understand that. But, you know, yeah, if it were, if it were to say, you know, to allow the kinds of signs that we currently have up this very minute in, in, in places, I wouldn't have a problem with this, but I think it's, I think we're opening the door for other, I can't find the right word, other opportunities for people to take advantage of, of, of this, and we, and we will lose any teeth we have to, to stop that, you know? We have no, I had no intention to, to call up somebody and complain because there's a real estate sign on the corner by my house, if they've asked me, I, you know, that's not what I'm.
I, I agree with you, Jerry, and, and, but I'm having a, like the safe alike, same language, I think is, really addresses onsite advertising and then doesn't really address off-site advertising.
Well, by definition, everyone needs to understand that by definition, advertising sign is a sign that advertises a product, activity, event, something that's occurring off-site or off-premise by definition. And a business sign is something that is advertising something that's on the property. So, a classic example of an advertising sign is a billboard. A billboard is an advertising sign because it's advertising something that's not on the premises where the sign is located. So, when this refers to an advertising sign, it's referring to a sign that's placed on a property other than the property where the activity or the business activity or the event is taking place. So, by definition, advertising is off-site, and by definition, business sign is onsite.
So, Dean, just for my clarification, in reading the sample, and again, sample language, when we say, if we adopted this kind of language, one additional outdoor advertising yard sign may be placed, we're talking about one sign in addition to this, let's say, open house or whatever?
Yeah, and it wouldn't necessarily, I think you have to ignore the word additional because it's not, you, you get your base number, at no point can you ever have more than six signs on your property, but that's during election season.
Right.
But again, even the signs that we're allowing during election season are not limited to election or candidate signs, you just happen to be able to have more signs during that period.
But is the intent of the language that if you have, for example, an open house advertised at the residence, that this language, if adopted, would, would allow another sign down the block, but not one across the street?
Well, every, every, let's use an open house sign as an example, and it's, let's say you live on a corner property. You could have an additional sign every, was it Saturday until Sunday evening? And it could say anything you want on there, every, every weekend, forever and ever and ever and ever and ever, you could do that. Now, will that happen? Probably not. It's probably not worth, you know, you could, nobody's trying to say, well, you know, trying to talk me out of that part of it, but the way it's written, if you had a corner lot, you could put an open house sign up on there during the hours prescribed, but you could also put in a, a sign, pardon me, for, for Dr. Davis using the downtown strip club, and you could advertise that every Saturday on your, in your yard and take it down every Sunday, and nobody, including anybody elected official, could do anything about that.
But, but, but wait, 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 wait.
No, that's what it, that's what it means.
Do we mean by that just one sign allowed? I, that's, I'm not clear about that.
But it can say anything you want.
Go ahead, Mr. Chairman, you may be addressing that.
I know, actually, I'm saying that I can't with any good conscience try to censor or moderate what someone has on their sign. So, a business is a business of whatever category it is, whether or not I find it morally repugnant or acceptable.
If it's, I guess if it's illegal, is that correct? It has to be a lawful business?
There, there are certain content-based categories that cities can regulate, unlawful speech or obscenity, for example, due to secondary effects. So, there are some examples where we could prohibit based on the content of the speech, but generally, that example that was pulled up, when it said one advertising sign, that could be used as an open house or any other off-site business message if it were adopted as written.
So, we have on the screen here, and I'll let Aaron walk through the definition, this, this is not a great deal different than the existing advertising sign definition that we have, but this, this is a definition of an advertising sign, and it is displaying a commercial message and it directs attention to a business, commodity, product, service that is not conducted, sold, or occurring at the location where the sign is. So, in the residential context, the, the two most common examples of this would be, I am having a garage sale on an internal lot in a subdivision, and I ask a neighbor I know at the corner of Ohio and X Street if I can place a garage sale sign in their yard. By definition, that is an advertising off-premise sign. Under your original recommendation, that would not be allowed.
Right.
Under what is being discussed here and what the city commission asked us to do was to look at ways by which that could be allowed, and what we determined was that it could be allowed, but we could not regulate that sign by content. So, Mr. Box's point is correct that if somebody wanted to put up a sign Friday 6:00 AM through Sunday 6:00 PM to advertise races at the Salina Speedway, that would be permissible. But under the Supreme Court doctrine, the way that they're interpreting the First Amendment is that the visual impact of that sign is the same, whether it advertises an open house, a garage sale, or races at the Salina Speedway. So, you're regulating the time the sign can be there, how big it is, how tall it is, where it can be, you just can't regulate what it says.
So.
But, but the recommended version that you sent to the city commission, putting a garage sale or open house sign on your neighbor's property is not allowed, and the city commission sent this back to say, is there a way that we could create an exception that would allow for that? And what Mr. Martin is saying is, yes, there is a way to allow, an exception to allow for that, but it would have the broader consequence of being, allowing other types of advertising.
And I appreciate Dean just saying that because it helps me say, okay, it does allow broader, but it is the, is the likelihood that the broader will be done with any frequency to cause you as a commission or me as a commissioner later on in heartburn, that's where the question is. It's not whether it could happen, it's whether it is likely or has any likelihood.
Yeah, so I think I understand the distinction being made between content-based, commercial, non-commercial, et cetera. That's not my question, and, and I think the, the question's been answered by Mr. Andrews' reference to the present language, which is a sign displaying a message, let's eliminate the commercial. So, if we, if we were to look at additional language, in the suggested language here, says one additional outdoor advertising yard sign, and I think for my purposes of clarification...
You've got to take away the focus on the word additional and just say a sign.
For my purposes of clarification, to finish that sentence, an off-site yard sign would be one suggestion. That, I think, clarifies that it's an off-site advertising for an event somewhere else, rather than one additional. And that my question was then, the language suggested to me that only one in a block might be suggested, that's not the intent of the, it is that any individual residential owner can have a sign advertising something somewhere else. So, it's just about the clarification, clarity of the language.
And so, even if this, if we took this approach, it's not going to open up Mr. Box's concern about the sign farm.
Right.
So, you're, you wouldn't, if I had a prime corner lot, I wouldn't be able to allow six people to put up signs in my yard because that would exceed the limit.
Except if it was election period.
Except if it were an election period. But again, that's, there would, for ease of understanding and enforcement, there should never be a time when anybody had more than six signs on their property, and the only time where you would have more than two is it during an election season. And so, we're just, we're not increasing the number of signs, we're broadening the menu of signs that one could place on their lot.
Right.
And so, John, if I could get you to go to page five of the ordinance? You know, let's see, yeah, page five. So, this is just how it would, and, and it said, the sample I had had the language, an additional, but it just, this says, you can't have a temporary sign in your yard, that's an advertising sign, except one temporary advertising sign may be displayed during a period commencing at 6:00 AM on Friday and ending at 6:00 PM on the immediate following Sunday, and it can't exceed more than four square feet or be more than four feet in height. So, while that might be designed and intended to allow the garage sale and open house sign, it could be used for other purposes if the owner of the premises so chose, but it would be only allowed during that period of 6:00 AM Friday through 6:00 PM Sunday. So, then you have to ask yourself, is that really going to be appealing to somebody who's trying to do general advertising?
And it gives credence to Mr. Box's comment that, how is that actually enforced? I, I, with that, I totally agree with what you're saying, and I completely understand that. On the other hand, I can't censure it and say that only real estate signs should be allowed because there's obvious reasons I'm not going to say that, but...
We can have, we could have, and, and I'm, I'm kind of winging myself to where I don't know how I'm going to vote on this, but we could have an ordinance on the book and be unwilling, and I may use that word loosely, but unwilling to enforce it because of the manpower that it takes and the, the backlash we get from the residents when, when they say, now go out and let's, why don't you go out and catch a real criminal after we get through enforcing it? So, we may willingly unenforce it, but that ordinance exists so that it can be enforced. So, there's a difference between being willingly unenforceable and, and not enforceable at all. And if we give up this, no commercial, and I'm not suggesting that you all have to vote on it, but if we give up this idea that says we're going to allow some potential for commercial in residential areas, we will give up our ability to ever enforce it. My contention is we won't enforce it, willingly we won't, but we couldn't, even if, if theoretically 30,000 people marched down here and said, we, we are sick and tired of seeing this kind of, of, of commercial sign as a residential area, we wouldn't have an ordinance to make it stop, ever.
But you could, you could institute an argument.
You could pass a new ordinance at that time, yeah.
I mean, maybe that's the thing to think here.
That's possible, too.
If we let it go, as this has been considered, and it becomes a problem, then deal with that. But, you know, it, it seems to me very unlikely that you would have people, you know, putting up signs for commercial things for two days every weekend, maybe there would be.
But you can't selectively enforce a law.
You can't?
Well, we, yes, we can.
Yes, we do all the time. We do all the time.
But that ought not to be the reason for doing it.
No, I understand, but you shouldn't, you shouldn't not have an ordinance because you say it's not going to be enforced anyway. But let's, you know, let's be real candid about it, the number, the amount of manpower that we have to enforce ordinances like signs are very small, and, and I, my, my feeling would be, and this is just me, is that most of them are enforced when neighbor A calls and rats out neighbor B.
I was going to say, we have the public to do that.
Right, but if you have neighbor A writing out neighbor B, the information they're going to get from the city is, he didn't do anything wrong. And that's, and you're saying that's okay, when it becomes so onerous, then we can get back together and make an ordinance, and that's a pretty powerful logic, as far as I'm concerned.
You know, one reason why I voted against the recommendation to begin with is because I didn't think we could enforce what we recommended, you know, and it was to not allow these signs because people are just already in the habit of putting up their garage sale signs or their open house signs, and maybe we could, eventually, people will find out that it would have, had we gone, or had the city commissioners voted the way we recommended. So, that was, I would say, the main reason I voted against it was I thought it went against what people are practicing anyway, and, and it would have been hard to enforce, even though I did understand it wasn't exactly what, I mean, it wasn't what the Supreme Court, it wouldn't have, it would have failed that test that you talked about. I'm wondering, can, can these signs be called directional signs rather than advertising? You know, aren't we just wanting to somehow connect what's on the property with that sign that's off the property, whether it's advertising a garage sale or an open house? It's, it's a, that's what we're wanting, we're not wanting some other commercial advertising. So, is there a way we could call it a directional sign? That's how I use those signs to help me find, oh, it's that street.
That's what we do call them, actually.
Directional?
Yeah.
Right, and some of them just say open house, they don't even tell you who, in fact, is sponsoring the open house or whatever the case is.
But if I kind of know that I'm, it's, I'm close, then that helps me to not have to sit there and try to read every street sign, I can just, you know?
So, I, I for one am relieved to finally hear what Commissioner Good had to say because I'm sitting here nodding to know what, what her perspective was on that. And, so, just to respond real quickly to the directional argument, just in terms of language, you're doing more than direct, you're directing certainly, but it is advertising, it is letting people know about an event, that, it seems like advertising is a reasonable term for that. But I want to come back to what you said because I think it's really key, at least for me, and this is partly my vote, which was for the greater restriction, and that is that we were listening to lawyers, and those lawyers have great effect. They are, after all, telling us whether or not the city may be sued, we are protecting the public good by protecting the city from unnecessary legal harm, and I don't know, I'm married to one, and so I kind of automatically bowed down, I mean, my genuflect before almost any lawyer, Aaron included, but, but my vote came from that perspective. At the same time, in the back of my mind is exactly what you are articulating, that, and what Commissioner Box is articulating, that we have regular violation of that, and if the city decided to not selectively enforce it, then it would be wise then to carve out an exception so that there is an opening for that. And I hear what Commissioner Box is saying about, well, then you open yourself up to not having any teeth, and it's a good point, but it's, it's back to Mr. Andrews' original question, are we willing to move off what I would call a, a strict legal Supreme Court kind of definition and just say, this is not going to happen here, or if we carve out exceptions that may be more friendly to the everyday use that's going on in the city? I don't think that gets me any closer to a decision on the vote either, but for me, that's, that summarizes the situation pretty well.
What we're wanting to articulate is that if, going back to Mr. Martin's memos, all of our discussions leading up to your original recommendation were based on the legal defensibility of creating specific content-based exceptions for garage sale, real estate, off-site signs. And our advice to you was that we didn't think that that was necessarily legally defensible. So, now what the city commission has asked us to look at again is, what about exceptions that are not con- that are not content-based, that are content-neutral? And so, the difference between where we are now and where we are when you were making your original vote and recommendation is that we didn't really weigh with you the merits or discuss the defensibility of non-content-based exceptions. So the difference between where we are this afternoon and where we were at the time of your vote and recommendation is that we didn't really offer you options that are not content-based exceptions. So what we're discussing here is, are you receptive to content, non-content-based exceptions that would allow for off-site, open house, and garage sale signs, recognizing that it could have the unintended consequence of allowing something, other things to be advertised, but recognizing that it's in a short window of time between 6:00 a.m. on Friday and 6:00 p.m. on Sunday? And we're talking about signs that are four foot, four square foot and four foot in height.
One, one quick clarification, and there are no circumstances would signs be allowed in right of way, though.
Correct.
That's correct. Still, there's still that.
And try to enforce that.
Excuse me, I apologize.
I, I'm, I'm thinking that we are making way too much of this. It seems to me that if neighbors get excited about somebody doing something too often or whatever, I hope that we have neighborhoods in this town, that people can go talk to one another and get it settled. It, it seems to me it's, your recommendation is okay.
But, thinking about that, if, yeah, generally speaking, I hope that that's true, too. But if we have the litigious or belligerent neighbor next door, to use the neighbor A and B that Commissioner Box was talking about, and if that legal, no signs at all exists, hypothetically, neighbor A could make life really hell for neighbor B unless there's an exception for a yard sign. Does that make sense?
Not to me. I, I guess I'm not following you. Is, is there legal grounds for any of this, for, between neighbors? Or is it just something that is enforced by the, the...
Well, we have not approached it by, it, it would be possible to, to state in the ordinance that a property owner may have an advertising sign if there is a house for sale on their block, for example, to try to limit the potential uses of that allowed sign. But, as we talked, the potential enforcement and how you go about determining whether a sign is lawful under that type of ordinance would be, I think, something that we didn't gravitate towards. I don't know if that answers your question, but there is no geographic proximity requirement in the code as written that would, that would allow the city to look at whether a garage sale or an open house or properties for sale within the neighborhood. So technically, if, as it's written, if you are allowed an advertising sign, that could be to advertise a property for sale on the other side of town or the immediately adjacent property.
Well, and I, and I appreciate that attitude that says sensible people ought to reach sensible decisions. And I, I hope we can continue with that forever. But at some point along the way, sensible people sometimes need more to take care of grievances against them. If I have somebody who starts a semi tractor in his driveway at four o'clock in the morning to let it warm up in the wintertime, and I go and I talk to him, say, "Hey bud, you know, I have to get up at seven o'clock and go to work," and that's waking me up. And he says, "I don't care. If there is no noise ordinance in Salina, Kansas, then we have two neighbors who are just going at it." And so, ordinances do provide an avenue for people to settle grievances in a way that falls a little less than, "You're bigger than I am, so I can make you do it." With that, if I may, I'd like to make the following notion that we can, so we can move ahead. I would like to see that the planning commission recommend that section 42508A3 be amended to allow the additional temporary sign exceptions to include off-site advertising sign and contractor sign, subject to whatever time, place, and manner restrictions the commission deems appropriate. And I know that sounds like a flip-flop, but it is. And I appreciate this group's ability to talk to each other and sometimes wring out decisions that might be. And so, you know, I'm making the motion. I'd like to see if somebody wanted to second it.
Second.
Thank you.
Discussion?
Well now, so here's where I misunderstood.
No, you didn't misunderstand.
No, no, no. I misunderstood, no, no, I misunderstood Commissioner Jackson's comments because with her second, she is approving, well, I thought she was disapproving before.
Oh, no, no, no.
Okay.
I know where you were at.
Okay, well, I, I'm glad we can talk, too, because I'm trying to sort through all the ramifications of this as well.
Small, it's... Would it be necessary to say that the off-site advertising sign would need the permission of the property owner?
Well, I think if we can get past where, where my motion will take us, I think Dean's right to open the book and give us an opportunity to talk about how big that sucker's gonna be and all that other kinda stuff that you were, you're worried about. Am I right?
I, I would say that the only, and Aaron can advise us whether that's implied or not, but I would say that the only difference between the sample language that we put in your packet, the planning staff provided, and what Aaron's draft suggests is that his draft does not include the provision that you have to have the consent of the underlying property owner. And he, he can tell us whether that's implied or not, but the reason we mention that is that there are some people who would rather not get the consent of the underlying owner and just put it there because the corner looks like a good location. So I'll defer that one to Aaron. The other point we wanted to make as related to the motion that Mr. Box just put on the table was that Aaron reminds us that we also need to make some revisions to section 42506 that we didn't have referenced in the staff report. And 42506 refers to the definitions. So if we, if we get to that point, we may want to modify any motion that's made to include changes to 42506, which is definitions. So John, if you could back up the, what's on the screen to go to 42506. So what Mr. Martin is suggesting here is that in order to accommodate this change, we would modify the definition of advertising sign. We would modify or clarify the, the definition of business sign, so it includes the exceptions we're talking about. If you could keep scrolling, John. We don't need a definition for garage sale sign anymore because we're being content-neutral in our descriptions. We don't need a definition of construction sign anymore, nor for open house or real estate sign. So as, as this change moves to a more content-neutral approach, basically, the only two categories that you have are advertising yard signs and business yard signs. And that, that is it. So as to the, the staff report and our possible alternatives, we did not include in our language there the possible changes to section 42506, which is the definitions.
And in alternative number one, as suggested by Mr. Box, how, how does the commission deem anything appropriate? Or is there particular language that you speak with in motion?
What we would ask you to do is look at our language relating to 6:00 a.m. Friday to 6:00 p.m. Sunday, and our four square feet of area and four feet in height, and ask you if you think those are appropriate. If you don't, then you can advise us otherwise.
Okay, so I have a specific thing, and I had been holding off on this, because the original idea was, was the larger idea. I understand that the, this language is written to accommodate weekend garage sales and open houses, clearly, from Friday to Sunday.
I think that's a fair statement.
I'm wondering if the language could be broadened to apply any time of the week, because we can't predict when that's gonna be.
What, Commissioner Box? It makes me almost wanna, it makes me almost wanna withdraw my motion, because I was gonna say, well, yeah, because there are, there are those little sales that occur in that paved area right outside the house, typically called a driveway. And some of them do occur on Wednesday night. And no, those people would be out of luck on this deal.
Yeah, you, so that's exactly the point. You gotta stand your robe.
That is my point, you know, from the very beginning. I think the original recommendation was extreme. I think this is moderate, but it's still extreme. I still am going with where I was in the beginning, that we do not need this extensive of a plan to begin with.
So let me finish my suggestion.
You don't want any of it, but...
We, not this much.
Let me finish my suggestion, so that you can look at this without backing off, all right? So, looking at that, if we had language that said, for example, between 6:00 a.m. on the day of the advertised event and remove by 6:00, I'm moving it to the morning, 6:00 a.m. on the day following the event, we give, and I'm thinking here about enforcement, whether it could be or not. But making it broad enough so that we don't have a lot of discussion about time, day, and so forth, and therefore making it easier on the city.
But if you take, okay, my, my, my fear is, and the only example I can use will be embarrassing to me and, and anybody that watches on TV, so I have to be real careful. If you don't have a time and a day in there, it becomes continuous. And I'm gonna use an example. It's not as far-fetched as it used to be back in the seventies. In the seventies, I went to a coed dorm. No, I didn't go to a coed dorm. I went to a dorm where genders were able to move back and forth freely between people's rooms, except after, after 2:00 a.m., between 2:00 a.m. and 6:00 a.m. Now, that always seemed to me to be totally crazy that they would do that. Wasn't until I graduated and got together with the dean of students at the university, I went, and he said, "You know, Jerry, if we didn't have that in there, we were basically allowing people to live continuously with you in your dorm." Now, that's not what they intended, that's not what, but they basically said that if you don't have a, a date and time on there, then that sign that I put up could be there seven days a week from 6:00 a.m. Well, I guess there's a little bit of time in the middle of the dark of the night when it would be. But basically, you end up with a sign that could be there constantly. And so, that time and date at least causes us to reset. Makes people, if they're gonna follow the law, they have to go out there, move it out of the way, and then come back out and plant it in the morning. So I hate to give up with that unless, so, here's gonna hope that we come up with something that's number four.
Once again, we have taken the approach of carving out, I'll call them limited exceptions. That, that is a perfectly valid view, but it, it's, it's going from here over to here, because if you don't have time, place, and manner restrictions, then you're basically saying advertising signs are allowed, period. And we don't, we don't...
Commissioner Box's comment, yeah.
Right, which is for unlimited, no, no time, place, or manner. So if you wanna have an open house sign in your yard 24/7, 365 days a year, not a problem. If you wanna have a garage sale sign in your yard 24/7, 365 days a year, not a problem. If you wanna advertise the Salina Speedway in your front yard 24/7, 365 days a year, it's not a problem. So, you can go there, but it's, it's, you're going from having time, place, and manner restrictions to having no restrictions, which is an approach, but it, it is an approach that if you look at the visual impact to the community and neighborhoods of having no restrictions versus the visual impact of having time, place, and manner restrictions, then there is going to be a difference.
So I, I, I understand that, and that does make sense as far as clarity of time and day. If you had it however, and I'm not necessarily hanging tight on this, but if you have an advertised event that is going from one time to another, and you had language about before and after that event, the argument can be made, whether it's, and I defer to the attorney in, in the room, about it being as restricted in time, date, and manner as the other language. But easier to enforce, easier to understand with the Friday, Monday. I, I'd go with that.
And, and as we talked about different ways to structure time, place, and manner regulation, the, the draft that's presented up there, as you saw, authorizes advertising signs from Friday to Sunday. That could be any day of the week. There's a number of ways you could structure that. It could be any day of the week, one day prior and one day after the advertised event.
That makes sense.
It could. It could indicate that no advertising sign may be displayed more than four consecutive days and not more frequently than every 60 days. I, I won't go on, but there's a number of ways you could structure it without relying on the day of the week or the way it's set up. We, we had to choose one to, to get the conversation started, and that's where we started.
So...
The date of the event would work.
Yes, if we were to stick with the concept as we have up there, where it says one advertising sign is allowed, or, excuse me, what, if we're looking at the onsite variety, we say one temporary business sign may be displayed. I think if we scroll down a little bit, I think it'll say up to two days prior and one day after the...
They're not all events, are they?
Down there in, in subsection 4.1, it indicates that the temporary advertising sign may only be displayed between 6:00 a.m. on a Friday and 6:00 p.m. on the following Sunday. That could be rewritten.
The, the construction period is...
It would be a little bit tougher as we look at the off-site varieties, because we're not saying they must advertise an event. As it's currently written, they're not, it's not limited to advertising an event. So, you know, if we're strictly talking about advertising for events, it's easier to tie that allowed duration to the start and the end of the event. But that relates to one of Commissioner Good's questions earlier. Can we shift from an advertising sign to a directional sign? And that, that's a good thought, and it's something that I considered, and I've seen other cities do in other contexts. The issue becomes, how do you define a directional sign and distinguish that from an advertising sign when you're talking about advertising a garage sale or advertising a, a sale of real estate? And we could, we could further explore that. We, I think we ran into some difficulties with defining a directional sign and distinguishing that from an advertising sign in a way that would accommodate what I believe we're trying to accommodate.
If they put an address on it, would that still, it would not be content-specific, would it? Or, I mean, or an arrow? Could we say an arrow or a address would make it a directional sign? Although, what do your open houses signs usually have?
Well, and that's a point I'd like to make. As real estate professionals, obviously, we do our best to have something that's appropriate and design-specific, and it looks good. And we have very strict regulations within our MLS system and other governing bodies as to when we put those in place and when we remove them. So I don't think real estate signs are the issue. It sounds to me like what everyone doesn't like are the remainder of the signs. So, I don't see how that can be controlled. Where are we at on vendor signs that are, because that's kind of how we veered off into this whole conversation with the city. If I hire a vendor to do something at my property and I wanted to advertise that fact, where are we at on that? Because that is not an event.
The sample text amendment subsection...
It's subsection three above, right there, under this.
We have attempted to address that by indicating that one temporary business sign may be displayed on a property when construction activities of any type are being actively performed on the property.
Right, but it's not an event, is my point. So it's much harder to target... So, it's much harder to target the concept that Commissioner Jackson mentioned in terms of one day before, one day after, that kind of thing. Right. Well, I had some of those going on for six months, you know, yeah.
And I mean, that was loud, obviously.
But in terms of enforcing that, or anyone understanding that timeframe, I, I just don't know how that would happen. I understand if it, if it's an event that takes place on Saturday, the 14th of June, but...
Or during the duration of construction or whatever.
So, Mr. Chairman, one thing I'm, I'm not clear about in the language. You're talking vendor signs. This refers to a contractor sign. And I hear what you're saying about,
It's the same.
About, you're talking about a vendor doing some service at that property, right? So, are you using those simultaneous, some...
Yeah, because they're not, they aren't all contractors. A contractor is a different definition. That's why I'm asking.
And give me an example of a non-contractor working on property.
Well, there are a lot of people that don't consider themselves contractors, that do work and service on properties and maintenance and all kinds of things, but they aren't contractors.
Are you talking about lawn maintenance?
Yeah, landscaper. I mean, there's all kinds of categories of businesses that aren't contractors.
For example, if I get, if I get my yard fertilized on a regular basis by a company that does that, you know, would they, could they, should they, ought they be able, allowed to put a sign before, during, and after? Or, in one of the things that maybe we talk about, they may just put a sign there all year long because I signed a contract with them on, on January the 18th. I got the 20% discount, so I've got XYZ lawn care in my yard all summer long.
But if we have, for example, a three-day window during which that sign, and I, I know, I know...
And see, hello, we're talking about a three-day window. And the point that Mr. Andrew is making is that it wouldn't be worth the trouble if you're gonna do it every two weeks or even every week to couldn't put a sign down. So you make, they could do that, but it's not worth their trouble for advertising.
I don't see, you won me over on that already, but that's, that's what could happen. You have to be ready for that.
If you look at the definition of construction sign, and I think that's what they're talking about, it says a temporary sign indicating the names of architects, engineers, landscape architects, contractors, and similar artisans involved in the design. So, I, I didn't see that they were talking about that these folks needed to advertise off-site.
I could, I could show you, I took a picture of one today. It happened to be in the public right of way. It looked a little bit like an election sign with those wire ones, and it's blah, 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 blah Service LLC. And it's set in that yard for 10 days. Now, I don't know if they're having what that place who, I won't tell what it is here, done over 10 days, but I don't mow my yard 10 days in a row. I'm sorry. And, and I don't care. It's not in my yard. If it were in my yard, I'd take care of it. I'd pick it up, fold it in half, put it in my trash, end of story. And that's kind of going back to where you all are saying, let's stop micromanaging this and let the individuals deal with it.
But that's an advertising sign.
Well, but they're doing work. I'm sure they do work at that place some point along the way. I've, you know...
That's what I'm saying. There's a blurry definition between those two particular things. Why can't we just have a flat maximum time on all of it? And not minimum times in this day and that day? And why can't the sign just exist for X amount of days, period?
Because a contractor's building for maybe three, four months, and he wants to have a sign there by the time he's there, right?
Well, I will, I can...
But we were going to take them all the way from them. So, you know, we were going to take, remove them. So, a, a maximum time of allowing it is better than none.
And I can tell you that the city of Flagstaff, Arizona, which is now on their third rewrite of their temporary sign code, but they they abandoned the term temporary. Because by the time the commissions got done with it, none of the signs were temporary anymore. Because by definition, if there's not a time limit on these signs being in place, then they are no longer temporary. They are portable. And so, we'd be looking for a different terminology to use because temporary implies that you have a beginning and a termination, whereas portable means that you're simply able to pick it up and move it. But the whole premise of all of these signs and why we're doing temporary first is that temporary can be distinguished from permanent signs. And the other distinction is that if you want to put up a permanent sign in the city of Salina, you have to get a sign permit. Whereas all the types of signs that we're discussing this afternoon are signs for which you do not and would not have to obtain a sign permit. So, if ABC Yard Service wants to put a sign in somebody's yard after they have fertilized it, it is not allowed today, and under this proposal, it would not be allowed. But it could potentially be allowed if you want to add the term, instead of construction activities, you could also expand it to say maintenance activities. But, again, when, as we, as we creep down that road, there are some that say we should just be completely content neutral and just allow a sign that says anything, anytime, anywhere, and just put limits on its size. And that, that is an approach, but again, we're still talking about an overarching policy of trying to limit commercial signage in residential areas. And so, the city commission asked us and asked you as a planning commission to consider two additional exceptions to the general prohibition on commercial signs. And what approach that legal counsel is suggesting is that instead of trying to do it on a content basis that we use the terminology advertising sign and business sign to distinguish between onsite activities and signs that are advertising or directing people offsite.
I, so I have a question relating to the motion and to the content. I think I'm correct that what we're seeing here as added or struck language in red was not in the packet. We were just given the original coordinates, correct?
That, that is correct. You were given back the language as you recommended it and as was given to the city commission.
Okay. So, the, the motion is, we're providing, the commission is deeming appropriate whatever kinds of language. But am I correct in the assumption that we're gonna be looking at specific language brought back to the commission that fulfills, if, if we would do that, the advertising and contractor signs?
What we have tried to do is provide that to you today, which is up on the screen. And that you can look, when we refer to time, place, and manner restrictions, that assumes that you are open to allowing temporary advertising signs and temporary business signs which become a non-content-based way to allow for contractor signs and for off-premise, open house, and garage sale signs. And that, but when we refer to time, place, and manner restrictions that you deem are appropriate, the time, place, and manner restrictions that we have up there are removed no later than 30 days after cessation of construction activities. There are time limits going from 6:00 AM Friday to 6:00 PM on the following Sunday, the four square feet of sign area, and the four feet in height. Those are time, place, and manner restrictions. So, alternative one assumes that you want to allow for additional temporary commercial sign exceptions. And then the second part of that deals with you arriving at a consensus that you either like what we have proposed in here or you want to recommend something different.
Okay. Well, so...
So, I could modify my, my initial motion, and then if you chose to, you could modify, you could second the...
Well, I don't, I don't want to get into those weeds. I just, I, I think if I, I want to re, just to reiterate. I think that what's up there that I have a hard time reading because of my eyesight, and we've got blinding light here, I don't think we have. Am I right here in the text in front of us, in the packet?
This version is not presented in your package.
So, my point is, we haven't seen that specific language. We have seen in the sample language and overall, and, and I understand, we're, we're debating, we're talking about the principle of whether we stick with our original decision or make exception. But, but my question is, we're not being asked as a commission to recommend specific language, right? Just to give you some guidance about how that would be shaped. Am I correct about that?
Well, we're, we're hopeful to get guidance from you as a commission to help develop language so that we can take it to the city commission. But if you so desire, you can tell us that you want to continue this public hearing to your next meeting and ask us to distribute to you this so that you may comment on that directly. But our first hurdle was to see if a majority of planning commissioners wish to entertain those additional temporary commercial sign exceptions or whether you want to resubmit your original recommendation. If you are receptive to allowing additional temporary commercial sign exceptions and you want two weeks to digest this particular draft and have that out to you, then the appropriate thing would, would be to tell, make a motion and tell staff that you're receptive to those two additional exceptions, but you want additional time to review the draft language.
If, if I were sitting here, I wouldn't, I'm looking right at the temporary advertising sign shall not exceed four square feet of sign area, not four feet in height. I would, I wouldn't want to pass that specifically if I were to find out that the majority of the temporary advertising signs that might be, fit into that category happen to be 4.5 square feet. You see what I'm saying? That would, that would, that would seem ridiculous. But I'm gonna guess the staff already has some sense about whether or not a four-square-foot sign likely fits the majority of the signs that we currently see in our community.
We do.
And so, I'm comfortable with having...
We have gone out and measured temporary signs all over town. And the only thing that doesn't fit are some permanent or semi-permanent real estate for sale signs that exceed that. But, except for those signs, 90-plus percent of the signs that we measured were less than four square feet in size.
My only thing would be is, is if I were, if I were thinking about changing my motion a little bit to include something with time, place, and manner restrictions as printed on the document reviewed by the commission at its meeting, I would feel comfortable that, that, that that could get cleaned up, if you will, and sent to the, to the governing body without it coming back here again two weeks later for us to decide whether it should be five square feet instead of four.
Well, it seems to me, it seems, it seems we ought to have action on your motion, Commissioner Box, at first, and then talk about...
Well, yeah, if that doesn't happen, there's no sense talking about all this red line stuff. You're right.
Well, his motion died for a lack of a second.
No, it didn't. Mr. Jackson.
I might have died since when I made it here. We're all dying up here.
So, if we were to put these things in order, the first thing that you need to determine as an eight-member body is, first of all, do you want to resubmit your original recommendation to the city commission? Or do you, a majority of the eight of you, wish to consider to allowing additional temporary commercial signage as the city commission has asked and we have outlined for you? Once you decide that, then your second question is, do you want to make a recommendation based on the information that we have discussed and have displayed for you on the screen? Or do you want time to review that and come back with a specific recommendation regarding language at your next meeting? The first question is, do you want to resubmit your original recommendation? Or are you receptive to making additional exceptions?
So I'd call a question on that motion.
And can you repeat the motion?
Yeah.
Well, I can reread the motion. It was, the planning commission should recommend that section 42508A3 be amended to allow for additional temporary commercial signs, exceptions to include offsite advertising signs and contractor signs subject to whatever time, place, and manner restrictions the commission deems appropriate. That was, that was the original motion. This is a public hearing, though, is it not?
It is.
May I ask, in that language, it says contractor signs, and we were talking business signs. I don't know if, do they need to be one and the same? I mean, I know...
I think the term contractor, that was a practical term to try to help you understand what we're doing. But the technical term would be onsite business signs.
And I, I think ultimately, if the direction that you choose to go is to recommend some form of what is presented up there, we would want the motion to be restated to pick up the additional sections that we're amending. When the staff report was written, it did not reflect some recent changes that, that required amendments to the definition section. So, in addition to 42508A3...
It'd be 506.
It would be, we can track down those section numbers. And then, as Commissioner Box mentioned, it would be to approve the amendment as presented.
Do the amendments that we have not seen change sign sizes?
No.
No, they do not.
From what we've already talked, it doesn't change the size of real estate signs because we have heard from the real estate community numerous times about this.
The only new language relating to sign size relates to offsite advertising signs, which would pick up offsite real estate and open house signs. But the onsite varieties are still subject to the same size requirements as presented to the city commission.
So, you're just saying the offsite signs would be limited to four square feet?
As written, yes.
And to avoid the conflicts that we have with signs in contractor signs, residential signs, can we just say signs? Because we can't regulate content anyway. If I wanted to put up praise the Lord in my yard on a weekend, I could do that, right?
You could do that all year round. Again, we're, we're talking about
I do every day.
Commercial signs versus non-commercial signs. Non-commercial signs are already allowed. Your recommendation allows for those. The only exceptions that were approved by you were for onsite real estate and onsite garage sale signs. So, the only two changes that we're discussing relate to commercial signs. We're not, we're not revisiting non-commercial signs. So, if you want to put a praise the Lord sign in your front yard 365 days a year, you can do that because that's protected non-commercial speech. We're only talking about commercial speech. So, if, I think that it's not productive necessarily to vote on that motion other than to get a sense from the commission whether you're, a majority of the eight of you are receptive to those two additional commercial sign exceptions.
Rather than call for the question, I'd like to call for the consensus, if that's...
possible.
I think we just need to find out if there's anyone in opposition.
Yeah.
Is there anyone in opposition?
You gotta, you gotta, you've got to remove the motion, and I will, I will remove the motion if you want me to, but you just can't ignore it. It's been made, it's been seconded.
Can't it just sit there for a moment?
It has.
While we determine whether there's someone in opposition to even moving forward?
Okay, alright.
Is there anyone in opposition to moving forward? Okay, now your motion is sitting there. What do you want to do with it?
I don't need to do anything with it.
Do you want to remove it?
Well, okay, okay. By the chairman's poll, it looks to me like it will be eight to nothing to go ahead and allow these signs. But my question to Mr. Martin is, in the language, what Commissioner Boxa did was to read the language of the packet. Is there any, what suggestion would you make to make that motion fit what you're talking about legally?
To amend the motion, it would, we would need a motion to amend, and I believe that the amended motion should, should read, "Motion to approve the proposed amendments to section 42-506 and 42-508 as presented during the planning commission meeting by planning staff." The only thing I would add to that is, if you wish to entertain the recommendation by Mr. Andrew relating to construction activities, to expanding that to construction or maintenance activities so as to allow a business sign when landscaping activities are taking place, not just physical construction on the building is taking place.
I, for one, would not want to see that, that change made.
Okay.
That contractors clear enough.
Okay, so that was just to follow up on that comment. We would need to amend the text as presented.
Okay, given the text of what Mr. Martin just said, is only Commissioner Boxa allowed to make a move to amend?
No, no, anyone can make a motion.
I would so moved that that language be amended into the motion.
Okay, that would take a second, then?
Second.
And to clarify, the amended motion added the section-
506.
506, right? It didn't do anything with the construction yard sign.
That's correct.
Okay.
So if you were to vote on that, you would be voting on whether to amend it. If it passes, then we would be voting on the amended motion.
I'd like to call a question on that motion.
So, we're voting in favor of the amendment to the motion.
Right.
All those in favor vote aye?
Aye.
Any opposed? That passes, and that would leave us with the motion itself. Any discussion?
And I understand the chair's desire just to have a consensus, and I'm not sure that I, that I want to fuss with that, and I'm trying to think whether you want me to, whether I should withdraw the motion, but I think, I think it's going to be much stronger. This is my speculation, is that the governing body is going to want to know how this commission felt in terms of 807153 or something like that, because I don't think it's going to be any quicker when the next time they get this than it is today.
And for that re-
So for that reason, I am not willing to withdraw the motion and would like for it to proceed.
And for that reason, I call a question. Yeah.
Okay, any other discussion? All those in favor of the motion? Aye?
Aye.
Any opposed?
Can you clarify what motion you just voted?
Oh, oh, oh. That was amended by Mr. Martin.
We thought the original motion had been amended to include the reference to section 42-506.
That's correct.
That is correct.
They voted on the amendment.
Right, the amendment passed eight to zero, so now the main motion as amended, including section 42-506.
Including section forty-
So you are recommending that this move on to the city commission?
That was my understanding, is it not?
Yes. Okay, so this, this would be a recommendation to the city commission to include these provisions.
Which would be planning commission alternative number one, correct?
Right, with the reference to the definitions as well. As presented.
Okay, then.
I would love that.
Got that right, Crystal?
Don't we have to hear from the public?
We did that.
I'll close the public hearing, then.
Let's move on.
Okay, that leaves us with administrative items, which is application P-93-2B, which is filed by Sutherland Lumber and Home Improvement Company, requesting approval of a replat of the Sutherland addition into three commercial building lots. This is at Sutherland Drive and the frontage road west of South Ninth Street.
All right, we're switching gears here, back to the physical environment, and the property in question here is located, and Mr. Berger here has taken a few liberties with his request area, but want to clarify for you that the request area is this entire piece right here. So we'll have Mr. Berger change that box so that it corresponds to this area here, but what we're talking about is a 9.4-acre tract, and if any of you can recall back to J.J. Chevrolet and its relocation from Crawford out to this area, that was an area that was platted as the Sullivan addition in 1976, and then the property was further split up, and property that was purchased by Sutherland's Home Improvement Company was platted into two lots in 1993. Then in 2012, there was a lot split approved and recorded for the Olive Garden Restaurant, and so a permit for that was issued, and now what has come forward is a plan to further subdivide the property. And so under Kansas law and the city subdivision regulations, you can split a lot one time without replating, but in this case, the lot's going to be split three ways with a property lot for Olive Garden, a lot created for a future Arby's Restaurant, and then there's going to be a 37-foot division between those lots, so you're going to need to keep going, John. And so this, this is the proposed replat, so what we have is a lot here for a proposed Arby's Restaurant. This is the existing lot for Olive Garden, and then there's going to be a shared access road coming off the frontage road leading to this back area, but there'll also be connections to it from the Olive Garden and Arby's parking lot. So if you envision the layout that you have at Waters True Value Hardware, where you have a main road coming off Ohio and then a bank and a funeral home on either side, this is going to be a similar arrangement, it's just that the use in this back area is not identified at this time. So this, this rear area back here is set aside for stormwater detention basin, and so what we would end up with is three commercial lots, one retained by Sutherland's, one purchased by Arby's, and one owned by Olive Garden. This property is all zone C5 for commercial development. No change in zoning is being proposed. All the lots have adequate frontage on a public street, and they're all, would meet the dimensional requirements of the C5 district, so from that standpoint, this is a little bit of a surveying exercise, and so we have reviewed this and recommend that the replat be approved, subject to four conditions that we have on page five of our report there. And I, I've got somehow language in condition number one, part of that got not included, but the title of this already is Sutherland addition number two, but if you could scroll down a little bit, John, or can we see the top of the, the title there? Not the upper portion where the title is? Okay, so, and I've discussed this with Mr. Delker, but this says it's a replat of a lot split survey of Sutherland addition. It is not, it is just a replat of the Sutherland addition. So condition number one deals with just how this is titled and indexed. The temporary drainage easement that's in place was supposed to be in place until we had a plan for ultimate development, and now this is a plan for ultimate development, so we would like the temporary drainage easement that's labeled on this to be converted to just a permanent drainage easement. There's a couple utility easements that have been requested by Westar, and then there's some technical survey and corrections that need to be made before it goes to the city commission, and then condition number four deals with, the concern here is that we have two out-of-state property owners, and we want to make sure that both of those owners are, have signed off on this replat before any additional development occurs out there. So condition number four is to ensure that we have, Sutherland owns everything, including the Arby's site, which is under contract, but we want to make sure that the owners of the Olive Garden site are willing participants in, in the replat before any additional development occurs, so that explains our fourth recommended condition.
Dean, in, in this drawing, is the First Bank Kansas in the Walmart site, then?
That is a, that is a, a drawing that shows this before First Bank got involved in that, so prior to First Bank, that's where Earth Care Nursery was, and so at the time of this drawing that's in your packet, there was no First Bank Kansas, and Walmart was a Walmart, not a super Walmart, so it, the drawing has not been updated to reflect the First Bank there, so it's, it's just a generalized description. So perhaps you could go back to the aerial photo, John? I'm not, I want to make sure everybody understands the property that we're talking about, but this is, this is the Med Express building here. We have Tucson's, we have the Country Inn and Suites, we have Olive Garden, we have First Bank, we have Walmart. This is Sullivan Drive, and so our replat area extends back to the interstate and back to here, and this box represents only the Arby's proposed site, but the replat is this area here.
Replat excluding Olive Garden.
No, the replat includes Olive Garden. So, is this drawing again? So I apologize that the red box is drawn in the wrong location, so we'll try to find a different drawing that better depicts that. Okay, so if, if we look at this in total, this is the proposed site plan for Arby's, this is a lot that's being retained by Sutherland's, and this is the lot for the existing Olive Garden. So the replat is to take this rectangle and have one, two, three commercial lots, where there's only two platted today.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes, sir.
I move that we approve application-
Don't we, do we need to hear from the applicant?
It's administrative.
Oh, it's administrative, okay. Sorry.
You are not, are you the applicant?
I'm representing. Excuse me?
I don't think we need, did you, is there something you wanted to say? Okay.
Do you want to start at the beginning or where I left off?
Start at the beginning, I'd like to hear it again.
You did such a good job, Commissioner.
We approve application P-93-2B filed by Sutherland Lumber and Home Improvement Company, requesting a replat of the Sutherland addition into three commercial building lots with, subject to the staff conditions listed on page five.
Second. It is moved and seconded to approve application P-93-2B for a proposed replat of the Sutherland addition into three parcels with the four recommendations by staff, correct?
Yep, absolutely.
Any other discussion? If not, all those in favor, aye?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries.
Can I ask one quick question? The Shoney's addition is listed, I think, directly to the north, is that right?
That's correct.
The Shoney's addition is the Med Express and Tucson's.
Med Express and Tucson's.
Was it one time owned by Shoney's?
What? Do you think Tucson's is occupying the restaurant that was constructed by Shoney's?
Oh, is that right?
Mm-hmm.
I did not realize that.
And so since Shoney's subdivided the property, they decided to name it the Shoney's addition.
Well, alrighty.
You don't remember the Shoney's restaurant?
I don't.
It had a very short life.
Yeah. Yeah, interesting.
Any other business?
We have no other business for you this evening. We do plan to meet on June 20th, but we're going to give you the Fourth of July off.
Good.
We have, on that agenda, we have a text amendment to discuss on the planned commercial district regulations. We have a application to further expand the Iron Street Tattoo Parlor. It started out in one storefront, moved to two, and now is proposing to further expand. And then we have a final site development plan. There is an outlot that was created at the southeast corner of the Walmart parking lot, and there's a proposal to do development on an outlot there, and that site plan will come for your review on the 20th.
So that, that would be behind First Bank?
No, we're in the southeast corner, so it's right on the corner of Schilling and Ninth Street. They carved out a lot there. It has frontage on Ninth and Schilling, but no curb cuts, so there will be access across the Walmart parking lot, but it is tucked right in the corner at Ninth and Schilling.
They're doing some construction there right now.
They might be doing some work in relation to locating utilities.
Dean, one quick comment. I know, it seems like there are extenuating circumstances about that, but just a request that, in the case of have, coming here and then having specific language, if we could get that in the packet beforehand, it would be helpful.
Right, and there was, there was some, there was some discussion about whether to, to do this as a discussion and then postpone consideration and bring it back for formal action on the 20th, but I probably wrongly advised that we thought that it would, that we could make the exceptions clearly understandable, and we were, we were incorrect about that, so.
And if, if I could make a suggestion that we send out in the water bill notices to all people who receive water bills, that rights of way are not for signs to be placed?
Most people agree that you're not going to put it in the right of way, and most people think the right of way is the street.
Most people don't know what the right of way is. We had that discussion, but people don't even know that the front yard in front of their house is a right of way, so.
If any of you are Facebook customers, the city does have a Facebook page-
They do.
And we just put a post on the city's Facebook page about not putting signs in the right of- about not putting signs in the right of way. And it's generated quite a bit of public comment that you might.
Good, they might have to go there and look.
You might want to go there and look.
Yes, I would suggest that.
R.J.V. does not stand for my name.
It was not a decision we made. It's been that way, always.
We want to reemphasize that there's been no time in recent Salina history where.